We are excited to have everybody here and be able to participate in the Richland 2 Candidate Forum. We have 12 candidates vying for four seats, so it's a big... Can you not hear? I'm loud to me. And so it's an important race. We're glad that we have the ability to meet and hear from all the candidates today. We also appreciate the South Carolina Archives and History Center for hosting us. It was an awesome venue, or it is an awesome venue. There are two wrecks on the interstate that are holding people up, so hopefully we will watch the audience grow as people can get here through the wrecks. And I wanted to go ahead and say that South Carolina League of Women Voters is going to be moderating this event. I wanted to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Bass so that she can tell everybody the rules and go from there. Thanks for being here.
Welcome on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Columbia area. I am Cabrina Bass, and as Ann said, I will be today's moderator. The league is a nonpartisan and is interested in helping educate voters about the candidates as they prepare. Voters prepare to vote on or before November the 8th. Due to time constraints, I will ask all the questions, and the candidates will be available for a short time after the forum for individuals who wish to ask questions of them. The questions were jointly developed by the Chamber, the Columbia Chamber and the League of Women Voters based on questions received from the community. Before we begin with the questions, I want to briefly review the role of the school board. According to the South Carolina School Board Association, school boards have four roles. One is to create a shared vision for the school district. Two is applying that vision through policy. Three is measuring, evaluating, and communicating the vision. And four is championing the vision through example. School board members are not in charge of specific developments or implementation of school programs. Therefore, our questions today are designed to ask about the accountability for implementing policies and vision. Let me introduce the candidates and then briefly review the rules for this forum. The Richland 2 School Board is comprised, composed of seven members. Four seats are up for election on November the 8th. One incumbent, Teresa Holmes, is running for another term. Here are the 12 candidates running for the four open seats in alphabetical order. Teresa Holmes, James Mobley, McGee Moody, Angela Nash, Nikki Porter, Darrell D.S., President, Eric Robelli, Larry Smalls, Terrence Staley, Joe Trapp, Tamika Washington, and Mary Ann Wright. Here are the rules. The candidates are seated in alphabetical order. In the interest of fairness, we will rotate the answering order to provide an opportunity for as many as possible to go first. This means because James and Teresa are not here, we're going to start with Mr. McGee. And each will answer, we two will answer the question. They would have one minute time limit, and it will be strictly enforced. My partner in crime today is Cynthia Flynn from the League of Women's Voter of the Columbia area, and she would act as the timekeeper today to help the candidates keep track of time. She would give a 15-second warning, and then will hold up a card that says "stop" when the minute is up. Candidates will not be allowed to interrupt one another while answering the questions. No inappropriate language, name-calling, et cetera, will be allowed, and no time is allowed for rebuttal. If a candidate can only make clarification during their allotted... Candidates can only make clarification during their allotted time. After the questioning is completed, each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement. Are there any questions related to the rules for this forum? Hearing none. Our first question. What are the priority issues that lead you to run for the school board? And what qualifications and skills do you bring to addressing these issues? I'll repeat the question. What are the priority issues that lead you to run for the school board? And what qualifications and skills do you bring to addressing these issues? Mr. Moody.
First off, thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to speak this morning. I appreciate it. My name is McGee Moody, and to jump right into the question, I think there's, there's two major things that led me to run, and that is the, the current teacher shortage and the issue with securities in schools. I think both of those need to be addressed immediately, but I think before we can do that, we have to have a board that can work together unified. And so how, how can I help with that issue? And I think, I was a coach for 25 years, and in that role, my job as a coach was to take anywhere from 75 to 80 athletes every year from different backgrounds, male and female, from different countries, speaking different languages, and unify them and move them towards winning a championship. And I believe that working on the board has very much the same goal. Working together as a group in order to provide the best opportunity to get the best education for our Richland 2 students.
Thank you so much. Ms. Nash?
I'm Angela Nash, and I am a Realtor here in Columbia. And one of the reasons I decided to run, well, actually to parents, our community, and our students, so that's three. But all of those kind of work together. When I started talking to people about things that were happening in our district, I get to see people come in and out. And at one point, people were scurrying to get in our district. Then they started scurrying to get out of our district. And I heard from a lot of parents, and I heard from a lot of teachers about the culture, and they didn't like the culture, and they felt like there wasn't any transparency as far as like communication goes, but also as well as how the confidence that the community had. And when you see that, and you live in a community and you love a community, you want them to have confidence in the place that our children go to school. Because when they leave, they need to be able to go out here and live a quality life in the city that's right here for them. So after talking to a lot of people, I said, you know what? I'm going to be an advocate for those parents, for those teachers. I'm a business owner here. I run a small team. And so I've been doing that here in Columbia for quite some time, and I'm pretty successful at it. Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
Hi, my name's Nikki Porter. Straight into our questions, we have, what are my priorities? From the beginning, I have had a, the same desires and passions that I've had when I entered the field of education, which is to ensure that our students have a safe environment. And that includes instructing the whole child. With that, my experience as a classroom teacher and a teacher leader within this school district over 14 years, I feel that I can give a different perspective on our board that we haven't quite heard in the past couple of years. From the outside, once I left the classroom and I was out in the community, I heard more and more of the picture that was being painted. And I felt that my experience would be able to give more details on how procedures are in the classroom and how that can affect communication with our community as well.
Mr. President?
Good morning. I pray that everyone's doing well, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Two things that point, that jumped out in terms of my reason for being a part of this board, of this candidate group. Number one was safety and security. The other one was support. And what I mean by that is support of not only the teachers, but the parents, those who are involved in this process. The school district has a very bad name in, among its people. I'm walking around and I'm constantly getting berated by people saying, "The school district is this, the school district is that." And we need to change that. That culture has to change. It comes through by leadership. As a pastor, as a business owner in this community, I've worked tirelessly to bring people together. I think that's the problem that we have. We are separated. This is a bipartisan election, and yet and still we are separated by partisanship. And we can't do that and be effective with the school board. And so I think we need to bridge the gap.
Thank you. Mr. Robelli?
Oh, can you hear me? Okay, good. Hello, my name is Eric Robelli, and I guess the two main things, I have like four primary things that I'm running on, but I guess one of them is just the school board management. Definitely that... There just needs to be civility on the board and some structure and hopefully some common sense, because I think the, a lot of the things that I saw the board spending their time on just didn't seem to me to be as important as the stuff that's out there. Second was definitely curriculum. You know, I've been, I've been talking a lot about classical education. I do believe that's the answer. I do believe that we need to get to our children young and get them the confidence they need to, to... Younger is just the, is just the confidence. I have about 35 years of experience in the, in the industry. I'm, now I'm a portfolio manager, real estate portfolio manager for the pension fund. I oversee a $6 billion portfolio.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
Good morning, everyone. The Wake? My name is Larry Smalls, and one of the priorities as to why I'm running is because I have two kids in District 2. I know many of you who are parents understand the importance of all of your children getting a good education, and I'm, just like you, I'm very concerned regarding the direction of our district. So that's one of the primary reasons why I'm running, my two kids. Second, I'm also running because my focus is to communicate that the parents are the primary stakeholders in all of our children's lives. If anyone that's going to understand what is the best interest for my children is going to be myself and of course their mother. So that's very important to me. And I've been in banking finance for 20 years, and because of that, I am in a unique situation where I have established lasting relationship with every aspect of the district, from board members down to the bus driver. So that gives me an advantage in being able to relate and identify with everybody in the district.
Thank you so much, Mr. Staley.
Let me first explain. You have to have hope. Never give up hope. And the question was, what are the primary issues, qualifications to address these issues? Mine is student safety, teacher safety, staff safety, and staff. Involving stakeholders and the community. Establish, the second was establish a policy and procedures used in BPA, which is Business Process Analysis, to be able to set up a good organization, good practice. And then I bring leadership. I bring administration. I bring skills, diversity. And I've done this over 28 years, at the lowest level of government, always to strategic levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
Yes, I, I think there are two things that come to mind right off the bat. First of all, we have to provide a safe environment for our students. And secondly, we've got to retain teachers, and we've got to recruit teachers. I think these things are incredibly important because without safety, the students are not comfortable. You can't learn if you're worried, and, and that's just a terrible distraction. It's a terrible situation to be in. And secondly, if we don't have teachers in classrooms, there's no point in having classrooms. We've got to keep our teachers. We've got to recruit the teachers we need. Now, some of the things that I think I could do to help with that, when it comes to things like safety, I've, I've worked, I've worked in schools and universities all my adult life. When I, when I worked at the Blackstone, we helped construct such buildings, and I've done maintenance for our school district as well as universities. So I have a good idea of the logistics and going behind these things. And lastly, I think, I think I have the ability to get along with anybody. I can talk with people, work with people. I listen, and I think that's important.
Ms. Washington?
So... So when we look at how divided our district is, we have to be able to come together in order to make sound decisions on behalf of our children, our teachers, and the entire community. I have 13 years of education experience, and what I want to see happen as a priority in this district is that we prioritize teacher shortages, because shortages impact safety. When you don't have bodies in a classroom, that impacts safety. That impacts the number of people that you need to be able to train on processes and procedures, and so that our students can also get a quality education with highly qualified teachers. I have worked at the district level as a classroom teacher, as well as I'm a business owner here in northeast Columbia. I would like to see more voices at the table, more people at the table, having the right conversations so that we can make sure that our entire community feels that they are part of Richland School District 2 community. It is important for us to build the hope, but also to now move forward and build trust.
Ms. Wright?
There are two things that come to mind. And the first, of course, is providing our students with great instruction. So how do we do that? Well, we provide them with the most qualified teachers. And I think we need to come up with some creative and innovative ways to recruit and retain teachers. So I'm for a signing bonus. I'm also for partial tuition reimbursement for those teachers who want to advance themselves and get additional degrees. So when we look at student achievement, we have to provide them also with a safe environment. Not just physically a safe environment, but one that also addresses their emotional and mental well-being. So we need to provide those services as well. And as far as their physical safety is concerned, I think we need to look at a multi-pronged approach to addressing that issue, not just on... Thank you.
Our next question. What do you see as the key indicators for measuring and evaluating the school district's success? I'll read it again. What do you see as the key indicators for measuring and evaluating the school district's success? And we'll start with Ms. Nash.
Yeah, there you are. Okay. I think that when you look at what our district is doing, and one is going to be what the community, how the community feels. Do they feel like they're heard? Do they feel like they're listened to? But also, do our teachers feel like they're heard, and do they feel like they're listened to? And then the most important is are kids getting out of school and able to do reading, writing, arithmetic? And are they able to get a quality of life? And that means whether it's trades, whether it's college, can they leave? And are they able to get jobs that are going to sustain them? And not with like a ton of student loan debt, but being able to get out there and live a life that they can make for them and their families. I think that's really it, is that is how we measure it. And every year, I think there needs to be a more clear way to measure the success of our superintendent in our schools. But I think that we have to start there, is looking at those things. I don't know if those things are completely measured in the way that I think the community would like to see, in a way that it's more transparent for them as well, so we can gain their trust.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
I think we should look at our state's way of measuring with the school report cards. I think we really need to have some discussions with those who make those decisions and how we're measured. Because looking at it this morning, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but this morning it was published, our state school report cards, and I was looking at all of the different gaps of our students and our, and our academic success. And looking at the different areas that they've chosen to put on the state report card, I think we should definitely be a part of those discussions. That is the job of our board members. I want our board members to be more active when it comes to those who make policies and decisions for our state. It directly impacts us and our students and our teachers. Right now, our students told us, based on those surveys, that the environment and the social environment is not conducive to their learning. That is one reason why I have been focused on what we can implement for our guidance counselors.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I think it should be measured by achievement. And when I speak of achievement, one of the things that's effective, that affects achievement is inequity in education. So when we talk about making sure that each child has the, has what they need to be successful, we also have to look at each teacher has to have what they need to help the child be successful. And so that's very important. If the, the classroom itself is not funded and not getting what it needs to achieve the goals of teaching children, that's going to be a problem. I've read an article, not an article, but a post just recently where a young man says that their class doesn't have math. They don't have, they have a whole school with, they have no math class. They're sitting in classrooms and being told to just log in and teach yourself. Well, we already know what that's going to look like. And so we need, we need, those things are what's important in terms of looking at achievement. And we have to be honest and frank, and we have to be...
Thank you so much. Mr. Robelli?
Yes, I mean, for me, it's, the measurement is, is the students themselves. You know, I'm not a big believer in memorization. I don't think that that really works. I think we need to give our teachers the tools that they can spend time with each of the students. I, I think that we need to put together a curriculum and a system that basically allows the students to really understand what they're learning. And it has to come from the teachers being able to spend time with them, show them real-life examples. I want them to come out of school with character, and I want them to come out of school loving and respecting this country. And I want to see them understand what their role is as they graduate from high school and go on to adulthood.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
I think one of the metrics you use is their ability to not only retain information, but also apply that information so that they could be successful and obtain whatever goals or successes they wanted to obtain in their daily lives, so they could be viable citizens in our society. That is the metric. One of the things that hinders that is the fact that, one, and we don't have a environment conducive for their learning. And I'm not just talking about having a curriculum set in place, because I'm certain these teachers do an awesome job in establishing these curriculums. The issue primarily is providing an environment where the students can learn. And we do that by two things. One, establishing an environment where everyone can be collaborative and working together, and ensuring that the students is getting the necessary education that they're needing, one. And two, also providing the, the necessary resources so that they can obtain those successes that they're seeking for. So those are the two primary metrics that are used to determine the achievement of each student. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Staley?
Yes, what I see is measuring and evaluating district success. Number one, you have to establish milestones, realistic milestones. Not something you can throw out there and just say, "I'm going to put this here," but something that you can measure and you can evaluate every...
And two, so that's, that's how I see it.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
Well, obviously, as a parent, one of the key things is, one, governance, ensuring that the policy and procedures that are being established in our districts is seeking the best interest of everybody involved, from the students all the way up to the administrators. Second, making sure that we are providing a, an environment for... His staff, his board, in order that they are able to facilitate these policies and procedures, and making sure that the environment for the teachers, as well as the bus drivers, support staff, all of the substitute teachers are able to teach and instruct in an environment that allows them to better assist our kids and making sure that they're getting a Bible education. And finally, establishing an environment that everybody can come and have a part and a role regarding the input, regarding the parents, because sometimes as parents, we don't get that input regarding certain things. And when they establish that environment, that's important.
Mr. Staley?
Yes, one key is team building. The board has to be ready to team-build within its own infrastructure. And the other is to policy some procedures or establish for, to, to set up the, the board to be able to function properly. We need good communication with teachers, staff, parents, stakeholders, as well as the community. And the last thing I would mention is the fact that we have to have the proper adequate resources. Those things are critical for any organization to exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
I believe that most community members really would expect the school board to, to find out everything they can about how our educational process works. I really think that they expect us to spend time in the schools as appropriate to determine what's happening there. You can't very well make decisions if you don't know what's happening in, in the schools themselves. So I believe that, that school board members will fulfill that obligation to community by spending time in the schools. Secondly, I think the, the community wants to know that the money that they, they're paying taxes is being spent wisely. And I believe that if we're going to make decisions about budgets and everything, that is probably the greatest control that the school board has over how programs are implemented. School board members should know how this money is being spent and know what's available, and make wise decisions on where it goes. Thank you.
Ms. Washington?
So there's an organization chart that pretty much guides how things should happen in a school district. And so one of our jobs, one of the things that we should do is to make sure that we're holding our leaders accountable for decisions that are being made for the operations of the school district. Also, we need more open communication, and that open communication needs to be transparent, as well as we're educating our community on how decisions are made. Many people don't understand the tax structure, but they know they pay taxes. Many people don't understand what the safety plan is, but they know that there's a safety plan in place. And so our job is to make sure that we're not only just sharing that that information is available, but we're educating people on what that actually means and what it looks like. And then we also have to make sure that we're upholding morals and values and standards as we are creating policies, implementing policies, revising policies, and that we do it together, because our job is to push forth the mission, vision, and the purpose, and we're to do it together with a sound mind.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
Yes, I believe that the school board should reflect the community that elected them. And by reflecting the community that elected them, we have to, as board members, we have to inspire confidence in the community that we represent. They need to know that we have their child's best interests, that we are allocating resources so that every child receives an equitable and appropriate education. And that can only happen if we are willing to communicate, to be transparent, to let parents know exactly what's going on, how their tax dollars are being spent, so that they have a sense of confidence in us as board members, that we know what we're doing, and we're doing the best for their children.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moody?
I believe the, the board's, the board's job is to create policy. And I think in order to do that well, you need to do it as a board from a 30,000-foot view. So you can, you can best create policy for all students, all teachers, all staff, administrators, that's going to encompass and help lead everybody forward. Now, to effectively create policy from a 30,000-foot view, you have to know what's going on at the ground level. And so I think the key to this is communication. So stepping into the schools and being able to hear the concerns of the teachers, being able to hear the, the victories of the teachers, being able to speak to the parents, creating an open line of communication on all of those aspects, students included. This is their education as well, and they should have an input in that. So I think communication is the key, but creating that policy that's going to move us towards the best district possible has to be effectively done through communication with all, all parties involved.
Thank you so much. Ms. Nash?
I think one of the things that, a lot of the frustration that we've seen over the past few years with the board is a lot of, you know, not getting along, but also it makes it, you can't find out what's going on. And we need to have that communication. We're talking about, over the course of four years, billions of dollars, and who's going to be managing those billions of dollars? And it needs to be people who are going to work together for the good of the community. It needs to be people who understand business. And I think that's why having a diverse board is a good thing of business leaders, of community stakeholders. But I also think when we make policy, a lot of times the people that it most affects are not involved in that conversation. And that's our teachers, who I've talked to many of them, are willing to have town halls, but right now, they're currently scared to say anything. And also, our parents, they have to be involved. But I also think that if you get some business leaders involved, some people who understand security, we would have a board that is well-rounded, but we'd all so have the confidence of a community because we're making decisions with them in mind.
Thank you so much. Our next question. As a taxpayer, how would you ensure the school board is budgeting, spending, and ensuring district financial well-being effectively and effectively and efficiently? Let me repeat the question. As a taxpayer, how would you ensure the school board is budgeting, spending, and ensuring districts' financials well-being efficiently and effectively? Mr. President?
That's a great question. And, and I would say the answer to that question was, is to pay attention to what is being done. You know, you, you asked some of the board members, and I've asked a couple about the finances, and they seem to not know themselves what's going on. And so it's a, how can you effectively make... And so it's if, how can you effectively make tax base? We, we pay more in taxes to our school board than anyone else in the state, if not the country. And, and that's, that's a reality. And we need to understand fully that. And then it needs to be transparent. We need to make sure that everyone knows what we're spending the money on. You know, we're raising a lot of money, we're paying a lot of money out, but it's not getting into the classrooms. And so that's a problem because the dollars and cents need to get into the classrooms. When teachers are having to use their own resources to fund their own classes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Robelli?
Yes, first 15 years of my career, I was an accountant, a real estate accountant. And then the last 20, 25 years, I've been a real estate portfolio manager. So I'm around numbers and budgets all the time. So I'm very familiar with that. I, I, I look at what I can see. Unfortunately, I can't see into the detail, which is really where you need to look. But what I can see is it does seem like we're fairly top-heavy, which I don't like. We also spend a lot of money on construction. What I'd like to see is, okay, can some of that money go to helping teachers become experts in their fields, right? I mean, are we training our teachers properly? Are they getting the tools they need? Are we having enough staff for them to spend time with each kid? So we need to see where the money is being spent and then we need to.
So much, Mr. Smalls?
Well, obviously, financial integrity is incredibly important. That's something that I've been doing for the past 20 years, just like Mr. Robelli, I've been dealing with numbers. And that's important in a district because you want to make sure that funds are allocated properly. And there is definitely transparency. If a taxpayer is interested in finding out what's going on, where the money is going, we're able to communicate that clearly to the taxpayer because that's very important. And one of the most important things also is servant leadership and accountability. It's, these are not my funds. The funds that are being allocated to the district does not belong to me. It belongs to the district. And I am accountable and responsible for that. I take that personally and seriously because when you're managing somebody's finances, their money, they want to know where it is, where it's going and how it's best suiting them. They want an ROI on their money. So that's something that's very important to me and that's something that I will make sure that will be instilled in district two if I am to be elected. Thank you.
Mr. Staley?
Yes, I, I've been fortunate enough to be what they call a CGFM, Certified Government Financial Manager. I also belong to the Association of Government Accountants. And just giving you those, those credentials indicate that I've had numerous opportunities to work with contracts at the highest level of government, as well as being a core, which is a contract officer representative. So I've written contracts, I've managed contracts, I funded million-dollar contracts. That's just small part of the background I have because of the levels where I worked. But you must be able to see, you must be able to sit on some type of, or find out the resourcing boards, why and who made the decisions and how did they prioritize those decisions? We as the public need to know that. We need to be able to help the school and help the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
I think the primary thing that as a taxpayer and as a potential board member that we should be concerned about is board members knowing exactly what a budget is and exactly where that money goes and where it should go. One of the things that, that I find unsettling is how difficult it is to get information out of our school district regarding finances and spending. I've been trying to find out a lot of things about some of the programs and it's very difficult. So that would be the has the right to know where every single dollar goes. That, that's what government's about. Government is supposed to take our money and spend it wisely. We don't know if they're spending it wisely if we can't find out what they're spending it on. It's very difficult to find out some of the salaries of some of the top people at the district, even on the state's websites. I find that odd. So I think transparency is very important and certainly school board members need to know about finances. And they need to dig and, and get the information they need. Thank you.
Ms. Washington?
I think it's going to be very important that we prioritize our spending. So we're looking at what are the gaps? What is the data saying? Because we often hear that we're a data-informed district. So what is the data saying? We talk about retention, we talk about shortages, we talk about safety. We had a bond referendum, people don't, they voted on it, but a lot of people don't understand how the money is being spent. So just as Mr. Trapp said, we have to be transparent about how the money is being spent and how we're prioritizing it. And then what are the needs? What are the needs of the people who are working, who are boots on the ground in the classrooms? Teachers shouldn't have to spend their own money on classrooms. I was a classroom teacher. I know what that bill looks like. And then also, how are we measuring effectiveness of how we're spending our money? Are we tracking our spending? Are we having meetings with the community and talking about what are the needs and what we're seeing? And then also, when we talk about measuring those things effectively, what is the outcome? The return on the investment? What do we need to change so that we can move forward?
Thank you so much. Ms. Wright?
Yes, I think as taxpayer and as a board member, it's important to know exactly what the general budget is and making it available so that we know exactly how the money is spent, so that we can see the breakdown of where our tax dollars are going. I think also as a member of the community, it's important for us to attend those board meetings and ask questions and ask the tough questions and demand that you get the information that you desire because that's your right to have that. We need to make sure that our district is transparent and that we are given the information that we deserve to have. Because again, the board and, and the entire system, they really do work for us, for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I'm sorry. Mr. Moody, I'm sorry.
Once I left coaching, I entered into the, the financial planning and financial advising part of the world. And what I, I figured out real quickly is that when you sit down with someone and you're working with their money, they want to know two things, where it's going, what it's doing and how it's going to work for them. I don't know many people that have a problem putting money into the school system so long as they know what it's being used for. So I, I think what we have to do as a school board is we have to, one, identify the needs. And you've heard that said a couple of times, but it really is the truth. And we need to make sure that our money that is being put in by the community is being used to address those primary needs. And you address those primary needs first and then you move on to the secondary issues and, and, and make sure that we're allocating our money in a way that is addressing the immediate need of the district.
Thank you. Ms. Nash?
Well, I think as a business owner, one of the things that I have to do is every quarter rigorously review my budget and see where I'm spending money. Because it's not, if I don't do that, then I can't keep doing good service for my clients and they care about their funds as well. So looking at the budget, it can't be something that's on autopilot. And I think a lot of times, just because we spent something on something last year, doesn't mean that we have to spend it on this year. But also looking at renegotiating some of the contracts that we have. If those contracts don't work or can't be renegotiated to where it benefits the school and our students, then we cancel those contracts. We go on to something else. Another thing is, I, you know, there was a conversation about infrastructure. We have a significant amount of infrastructure, beautiful buildings. But if the students are coming out and they are not able to read or able to function, then are we, do we need those beautiful buildings? Because every time a change is made on those plans that people don't realize, it costs thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars every time a change is made. And so we have to be transparent with that.
Ms. Porter?
I hear what's being echoed is that we need information. And I think we need to go a bit deeper than that. We're given reports regularly. It's public information. Our salaries are public information. Anybody who makes over $50,000 is public information. So what we can do to move forward is come up with a plan on what we're going to do with that. So working on a learning and development team, one thing that we do to organize our efforts to ensure that everyone's doing their job is you set data requirements. So as we see, we receive the data and we have clarity on our data requirements, it's not so easy to go and spend. You shouldn't be given a large sum of money and said, okay, spend it how you need it. No, let's change the requirements. That's a part, part of policymaking and accountability. So if we do that, then perhaps we'll have more clarity on where our funds are going. Because we get the reports daily and it's publicized on our website. Let's organize, let's have committees so that we can focus our efforts and not have the whole board going.
Our next question. How will you develop working relationships with your fellow board members and work as a board to ensure transparency in the school board decisions? I repeat the question. How will you develop working relationship with your fellow board members and work as a board to ensure transparency in school board decision? Mr. Robelli?
Yes, thank you. I mean, just being in the, in the public and private sector, I have for so long. You know, you're dealing with all kinds of people, even if you're not on a board. You know, you're dealing with, you know, people you work with, coworkers, all different, you know, types, different political types. And you, your focus is on getting the job done. That's, that's, that's what you need. That's what you're paid to do. If I get on the board, it basically is the same thing. You know, my job is to try to provide the best education for all the children in Richland, too. And you're only going to accomplish that if you can work with the other board members. It, it shouldn't be a fight. We shouldn't be seeing that. Unfortunately, I think we have too often. And so it's, it's, it's really comes down to you need to be able to work with the other people, no matter what they may think, and try to persuade them. And that would be what I would be doing and that would be my focus.
Thank you. Mr. Small?
Well, obviously, being civil. And that requires paying attention, listening, being able to absorb, get information from my fellow board member, my counterpart, to see basically where they are. And being able to identify where they are and then at the same time be able to share or declare with them where I stand. And I think that's the basis of communication. I think if all of us are able to relate to somebody in a manner by just having a conversation and not seeing this as a battle or a fight for superiority, then I think we could get a lot of, a lot of issues taken care of. Or at least come to a point where we can at least meet in the middle and provide the best possible policy to be put in place for the best interest of the district. So this is not rocket science, really. It just boils down to your ability to want to see the district grow and progress. And by doing so, it requires you to be able to interact with your fellow board members. And not just your board members, but also the administrative staff.
Thank you so much. Mr. Staley?
Yes, if you, you think about how God created each one of us, he gave us two ears and one mouth. Those two ears are to listen. Diversity, number one. Communication is also critically important. But team building, I mentioned this earlier. The board, our board needs to have team building processes, implement team building quarterly as much, as much as we need to. Because we have to stay positive. And the last thing I would mention is character strength. I have to know on this board, these members' character strengths. I need to know their weaknesses. I need to know their strengths. For me to be able to succeed and to help build this board to be a very good board, I've got to know something about their character strengths. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp?
I think the, the greatest characteristic a person can have is to listen to others. I learned a long time ago that I do not have the best idea all the time. And I, but I want to be successful in everything I do. Therefore, I listen. And when people have a better idea, I, I go with it because that's how we succeed. I believe that as a, a board, you have to, you have to respect each other and you have to have genuine respect. Because if everyone has genuine respect, we tend to be more free in sharing our ideas. When you have people that, that are judgmental and rude, people hold back on the ideas they have. And in an environment like that, things don't happen that need to happen. We need to have a group of people that encourages each other to share their thoughts and their ideas so that we can as a group make the best decisions possible. Thank you.
Ms. Washington?
I believe it's important for us as a board to move together on a unite, as a united front. And so how do we do that? We respect each other at all times, no matter what decisions are being made, whether we voted on it or not. We build on each other's strengths. We, we bring things to the table. There's a diverse group of people running for the school board that are bringing a variety of skills and talents to the table. And so we build on those skills and talents. We also collaborate with our community, which means that when we go out, as my mom used to say, what happens in the house, it stays in the house. So when we go out, we're united front. We're speaking the same language. We're on one accord. Because we have a mission, vision and a purpose to fulfill. And that's to make sure that our district remains premier and that we continue to push our students to be successful in life. And then also, we may not agree on everything. We may not make all the decisions that the, the community wants to make. But we're making the decisions as a sound group of individuals that the board, that the community has voted on so that we can ensure the success of every student.
Ms. Wright, thank you.
Well, I think if you come on board with the idea that you're going to be cooperative, that the whole idea of cooperation among the board members is going to be your goal, I think that sets the stage for what will happen later on. I think it's also important to realize that there are seven individuals. Each one of those individuals has a unique set of skills that they bring to the table. We need to be respectful of those differences, those different skill sets. And allow those skill sets to be used for the benefit of our children. I sit on the board of two other organizations. And so I know how important it is for the board members to have that sense of cooperation. And again, listen to each other, find the common ground that we share. We're more alike than we are different. And that's what we need to build on, a sense of cooperation among the board members.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moody?
I think a board member has to, has to enter the room with an attitude of humility. When you walk into a room, I did this for years as a coach. When I would walk into a staff meeting, I would work with my other coaches and I would encourage them to ask questions. I would encourage them to criticize and pick apart every decision that I made. And there's a reason for that. If, if I made a decision regarding our team, if I knew they were going to ask a question, I better have an answer for them. Otherwise, it was going to kill any validity that I had if I, if I couldn't explain why I did what I did. And so walking in, knowing they were going to ask questions kind of solidified my position. Also criticism. I don't always have the right answer. And so when I put forward a decision, if they pick it apart a little bit, I'm going to take that back and I'm going to look at it. I'm going to knock the rust off of it. And what I'm going to come out with is going to be the strongest possible policy that I can for our team moving forward. I think you have to do the same thing as a board. You have to go in with humility. You have to listen to the ones around you. There's a lot of, lot of expertise in the room and you have to use that when you're making a decision to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Nash?
I think I've said it many times, but having a diverse board is a really good thing, of different knowledgeable gifts and things like that. But when I think of school board, I think of an airplane. And the very posh job is to be the pilot. That means every, the person who wants to be in control and be seen. However, the airplane doesn't work if the mechanics aren't there. And so we need seven mechanics, people who are willing to go in and looks at the cogs and wheels, using their gifts to work together to make the plane work and make sure that it soars and flies. That's what we need. And so I plan to come on the team and be a mechanic, not a pilot, but a mechanic. And so that we can get work together to make sure that our students, our community have our confidence. But more importantly, that our students can go out here and have an active life and they can.
My most favorite accolades have come from working with the team. And I am very much team oriented. After taking the Gallup Business Association StrengthsFinder assessment, my top four, I think some of you guys echoed this as well, was communication, futuristic, empathy and woo. Now that woo is wooing people, right? And it's also knowing how to have a good time. Well, you can't have a good time when you have personal issues amongst board members. You need to work on building those relationships. It's clear that there are some personal issues that are festering on our board. Let's start from scratch. One of those things is working as a group together towards one goal. And how we can do that is aligning ourselves with that one goal. Looking at the vision again and restructuring it, having committees that we work on together, dividing up and trusting each other to be experts in those, in those committees. Looking at each other for information and trusting that you're going to bring back what's best and right for our school district and our parents and our students.
Thank you so much. Mr. President?
I think the biggest issue with these board now, and one of the things that we would hope to, to bring would be a fellowship. That there is no fellowship among board members. They have no relationship. They've built no camaraderie among themselves. They're just issue. And this is, these are my issues, these are your issues. And they can't work together that way. We need a board that's going to fellowship, to have some relationship with each other so that they can have respect for each other. I cannot build respect for someone that I have no relationship with. And that, that's, that's what the board needs to do. I believe that I've had the opportunity on numerous occasions to bring different groups together. That's what I do. I'm a, I'm a uniter. It needs, we have to come there with common respect for each other. If we do that, then we can be effective. We cannot be effective in our current state, even among. We cannot be effective in our current state, even among ourselves as candidates, we have to think about that, because whatever you do now on the road, you're going to do when you get there. If you're not, if we're divided now, we're going to be divided when we get there. That's the reality.
Thank you so much. The next question. The district is facing a shortage of teachers. How does that impact the overall goal to educate students, and what is your plan for rebuilding the teaching staff? I'll repeat the question. The district is facing a shortage of teachers. How does that impact the overall goal to educate students, and what is your plan for rebuilding the teaching staff? Mr. Smalls?
Well, obviously, if you don't have enough teachers, then obviously, the kids can't get an education. And obviously, the district cannot function and operate as it should because of lack of staff, lack of bodies in place in order to provide the education they need, so that the kids can grow and be viable citizens in our, in our county. One of the things that really came to me regarding how to best deal with this is to listen. In many cases, when teachers come inside of my place or institution where I work, I hear this all the time, Larry, I'm retiring because I'm tired, I'm frustrated, they're not listening, they don't take, they don't even listen to me regarding certain suggestions I have, certain things that are very important to me, and as a result, I'm not giving them any more time. So I think listening, especially to the tenured teachers that's been around for many years, is a bridge that can at least slow down a lot of the teachers getting out of the education field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staley.
I, I think, or I think the district and the state Board of Education needs to look at the resources. We're short of teachers. Where can you get the bodies? Think about some of the things and some of the programs and agencies. Number one, Department of Defense. There is tons of retired military out there. Some of them would be happy to, to part-time teach, or even full-time teach. You've got a resource out there, work with the State National Guard. You've got military presence in this, three percent, correct, the third highest employer in the state of South Carolina, it's the United States government. Reach out to some of these agencies, these, these folks, they'll be a great resource to help make up for the teacher shortage. And the other, again, I talked about features and benefits. The features and benefits for teachers need to be restructured, and they can be restructured to fit and to help teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
I, I've had a lot of teachers come up to me and, and share their experiences as a teacher in the classroom and everything, and, and the one thing that, the one thing we've got to do is we've got to do whatever it takes to keep teachers and to get more teachers. We've got to either spend more money, or we've got to change the environment they work in to make it more pleasant. And that, I think, is, is the greatest challenge we have. Without exception, every teacher I've spoke to has spoke of a toxic work environment, where they are afraid to, to come forward and share problems they have with the administration. They feel if they rock the boat, that they'll be retaliated against, and there's no reason to doubt these, these individuals, these, you know, like I said, every teacher I've, I've spoke to has talked about this type of thing. So I think we need to figure out some way and do whatever it takes to have the environment at our schools where our teachers feel they're appreciated, and that they can, they can come to the administration with ideas and thoughts. That'd be my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
So as a former classroom teacher, shortages definitely impact the culture and climate of a school. And as I stated earlier, it also has an impact on safety, and it also makes us begin to open up our eyes, to begin to think about how we're actually spending our money and what we're prioritizing. We have to have a retention plan in place. Corporate America, I've worked for corporate companies, and they've done, they've done great jobs at looking at how do we create environments that people want to come and enjoy working in? Oversized classrooms, so, you know, people can say, well, let's go to, talk to the legislator. We really don't have to run to the State House for that. We can look at what money is available in our budget to be able to hire and retain teachers, or to be able to put quality professionals in classrooms. We need to create internal pipelines and structures, where we're looking at, do we have substitute teachers who want to become teachers? How can we partner with universities and organizations that offer alternative routes, so that we can make sure that we have people in those classrooms at all times?
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Well, I believe that the teacher shortage definitely impacts student achievement. So that's the primary goal of schools, is to make sure we prepare our students for the future. So I think there are things that we can do that will help us as far as retaining and recruiting teachers. For example, if we want to hold on to our good teachers, what we need to do is give them more autonomy, allow them to partner up with another, maybe novice teacher, so that they can actually work together. That novice teacher now has some support, and would more likely be willing to stay as long as they know there's going to be some support. The principal should have an open door policy, so that you can go in at any point in time and talk about issues and problems that you may have. So there's some things that we can do as far as signing bonuses, partnering with the local colleges. Columbia College just started a, an apprenticeship program, within two years, you can become a certified teacher.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moody.
I think where there's a, there's kind of a, a perfect storm brewing here, in that if we're not proactive, it's going to get worse before it gets better. I think we have a, a large, large number of teachers that are coming up on 28 years of service. Beyond 28 years of service right now, there's really no incentive for those teachers to stay involved in the industry, and many of them are voicing right now, I'm out at 28 years. We need to create an incentive program. We used to have the Terry system that kept them in and was a huge benefit for them. That was done away with, and we need to create incentives for them to stay beyond that. And the reason that's important is because we've only got 2% of college students that are going into the education field. And so we need to take those 2% that are coming out, and we need to make sure they're mentored, make sure they're brought up correctly. And we need to create programs like working with the colleges. So in Richland Two, when we have someone come through education, we give them tuition assistance, and in return, they teach in Richland Two for four years, or, or an allotted number of years once they finish up school.
Thank you. Ms. Nash?
Well, they say that good news travels fast and bad news travels faster, and a lot of our teachers are very afraid. I've gone to town hall meetings, I've sat in meet and greets, and they don't, you will ask them like, well, what do you need? And they're afraid to say their name, they're afraid to be in photos in a background. And that is a toxic culture that no one should have to experience. And when you see that, and students be misbehaving in class, and then sending them to the administrator, then they come back, and then nothing's done about it, the teacher feels like they have no power in their classrooms, they have no voice outside of the classroom, and it makes for an environment where they don't want to work. And then that spreads, and people hear about it, and students coming up saying, well, why would I want to be a teacher, when that used to be one of the most coveted jobs there was? Everybody played teacher when they were a child. And so I think we have to fix that environment, so that they can thrive, and that, and I think the benefits are great. I think that was something that McGee had a very great point about, the incentives that we give teachers, we have to look at that, and restructuring that gets back some of the things that they've lost, because if we don't have them, we don't have anything.
Thank you for that question. Yes, there's a teacher shortage, I'm very close to this subject. One of those issues is that when you look at the benefits as a retiree, we don't have many, and so we should incorporate a, limiting the cap of 28 years of their, their income growing, so look at other ways that we can give them an incentive to stay. Also, I was talking to someone at a health, a hospital, an area hospital, and they were talking about how they do paid partnerships with interns. So perhaps looking at the benefits for interns who are already in the, in, in our playground, you know, they're already here, we have direct connection to them, so talking about how we can get ideas from them to make it beneficial for them to come back to us. Our homeowners, when you pay your taxes, it goes to our public system. We are a public school, so it is very important.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Mr. President?
I think this is a number one priority that we need to focus on, is, is teacher retention pay. I, I'm a small business owner, and I know what it takes like, what it works like to have a workforce that is leaving. You know, one of the things I had to do was figure out how do I keep my workforce, so that I can continue to run my business? And what I did was I raised the amount of money I paid them, that was above and beyond what they were being paid in the industry. And I think when we, when we talk, when I talk to teachers, one of the things that they always say is the same thing, for all that I'm doing, I'm not compensated for all this, and I'm going through, I've got to be everything, I've got to be a policeman in the classroom, I've got to be a counselor, I've got to be a, a guidance counselor, I've got to be a mental healt, mental health coach. There, there's a lot going that we're putting on them, but we're not adequately compensating them, and we need to do so, we need to push for that. Also, we need to make sure that, that it does look attractive, that people want to be in this district, that teachers want to come from wherever they are, to be in this district, whatever we have to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rovelli?
I mean, i- i- it's extremely important, right? If you don't have enough good teachers, you're not going to have good students, right? So we have, we have to figure out, the first thing is, we have to figure out, well, what is the problem? What are the two or top two or three things that are keeping teachers, you know, wanting to not teach, and then leaving the, the field? And I'm going to borrow, I'm going to kind of follow on to what Ms. Nash was saying. If, if I took, you know, and filled up every seat here with the teachers, I don't think I'm going to get the true answers that I need, I just don't. I, I think that they're, they are afraid, they don't want to be exposed, they certainly don't want to put their career on the line, to be honest with me as a board member. So I think the one way is I've got to open up, if I was a board member, I want to have a, a communication with the teachers where they can get with me one-on-one, and they can, they can help me understand what the problems are, so we can start, you know, solving some of them.
Thank you so much. The, the last question we have before we do our wrap-up. How would you balance resources to ensure opportunities for quality education at all schools? Again, how would you balance resources to ensure opportunity for quality education at all schools? Mr. Staley?
That's, that's a good question. Again, you probably, I, I would think you would need to establish some type of board in personnel and staff to review what the, what the requirements are, and based upon those requirements, prioritize those requirements, but have a very good acknowledging, knowledgeable board that has some idea about exactly what it is, where those resources should be going, who should be helping direct those resources, and determine some type of measurement, or at least determine how those, those funds would be allocated. I think that is critical, to establishing, to make sure the resource is going where they're going. Thank you.
Mr. Trapp?
Well, I, I'm going to say something I, I don't want to say, and, and that is, I, I'm not sure, I hate to admit that, that's a, that is a very complicated question, because we have so many individuals, so everybody, every student's unique, and they all have unique requirements, and we, you know, if, if we offer things at one facility that we don't offer at the other, I know we have programs in place to allow students to attend different schools, so they can take different classes and things like that, but not everybody has transportation. And so you just, there's so many complicating issues, it would really take a lot of effort, and, and I guess that's really the answer to the question, is we've got to determine exactly how we can do these things, and, and the logistics behind it, it, to me, is mind-boggling. But we have to reach out to the community, we have to perhaps develop programs that will help with transportation, as well as offering services at schools that maybe are virtual, I'm not sure, but that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
So I stated earlier, you have to prioritize the needs. What are the needs of the individual schools, or even the needs of that community? And from there, you can begin to look at how you want to allocate resources and funding to be able to support some of those needs. And then you also have to bring the right stakeholders to the table. That means that you may have vendors and organizations or businesses that have the resources to be able to bring those different initiatives to the school, or to the school district as a whole. And then the last thing is, you have to measure the effectiveness of it. Is it effective? Is it working? Because if it's not working and we have it in place, that's an indicator that we're spending money that we don't need to spend, and that we need to do something different. And so prioritizing the needs is going to be the first thing, and just as Mr. Trapp said, it's so massive for us to actually dig down into that, and once we do that, then we can begin to see equity in students across the district getting the support that they need at the various levels.
Ms. Wright?
I think one of the ways that we could balance the resources is, first of all, look at each school, look at what their needs are, look at the student population. If we're looking at a school that has a large percentage of free or reduced lunch, students from maybe lower socioeconomic level, and then also looking at our, our exceptional children, special needs. Those are the things I think we need to look at in order to adequately provide every child with, as I said earlier, an equitable and appropriate education. So the needs that are present is what we need to look at. And then also, we need to be able to evaluate those programs that we put in place to address those issues, and to see whether or not the data is giving us what we want. Is it being successful? And if it's not, we need to change courses.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Mr. Moody?
I think, I'll, I'll go back to what I said earlier, that policy has to be made at a 30,000-foot view. However, you have to be in tune with what's going on with the individual schools, you have to know what's going on inside those walls. I'll give you a very specific example. I was posed with a question the other day, I had a teacher that said, we found out that 40 to 60% of our fourth graders in our school were below reading grade level, and we have one reading interventionist. How are we going to catch up? And I think that's a very, very real problem to them. And so that policy from a 30,000-foot view has to take a very individualized approach when you step down into the school. We need to make sure that we look at their needs, and we give them the resources. They can't have one, one interventionist for 85 students or 100 students. They need the correct proportions of our resources and our teachers to effectively move that number, move the needle on that number and, and make it better.
Ms. Nash?
Echoing Ms. Washington, Mr. McGee Moody here, I think that they said some very important things. One, looking at the basic needs of what students need, but then there's also that point where you have to involve the community, and this is a great opportunity to involve the community, and once we've gained their confidence, I know that they're willing to do those things. I know personally that my church has been very much involved in working with unaccompanied minors and making sure that they had book bags. At one point, they were giving tens of thousands of dollars to teachers for just the, the basics needs that they had, so we can alleviate these Amazon wish lists at some point, and teachers. What's working and what's not working, and how we can continue to make those things that are working better, and make sure that those things we rip off and duplicate where it is working, and pass that on to schools that need those services.
Ms. Porter?
Please excuse my haste as I answer this question, I have so much I want to share with you. So I have data requirements and budgets, I already referred to that once, and, and to make them effective is making sure that when we create a budget that is directly aligned to growth and success. So of course, we're going to do that, as having that business background and having business leaders on our board, they will tell you this. Needs cost money. Allocation of funds is important, so we need to look at how we're allocating funds, and that data requirement and budget effectiveness and having that being turned in along with spending is going to help with allocation of funds. We need, our grants that we're given have stipulation, so you can't spend it freewheeling, you need to know where that goes. Our homeowners pay money towards a public fund that is given back to us through general funds, so it's very important with our conversations with our leaders, because they make those decisions. We can't ignore that. Partnerships with committees, with our direct committees.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Mr. President?
Yep, I think if, we should first start with equity and education, make sure that each child gets a certain dollar amount that's attached to that child, and that they're getting those. And then on those special programs that we look at, that each school needs, you know, I have a daughter that had special needs, and so she had an IEP, and when we go into to her, her training was different, and, and her needs were different, and they should, they required more resources in certain areas. And so those are important things, they've got to make sure that we're funding those things, because every child has value, and we have to make sure that we value each one of the children, and we put the money where it goes. Like I said before, a lot of the money is not reaching the classrooms, it's not reaching the children. We have to make sure that they are getting the money into the classrooms, because our goal and our responsibility is to educate the children, that's what we're there for. And so we got to make sure that that's being done before anything else is being done, and we're making sure that these children in these classrooms are receiving everything they need, so they can be successful.
Mr. Rovelli?
Yeah, I mean, the way I see this, is this basically is, this is probably one of the bigger priorities of the board, right, is the budget. I mean, that, that, that's, and it's not just, I've heard a lot of comments here that it's, it's hard to be very specific about that, because it's, it is, it's involving personnel, yeah, it's involving how much money you're, you're pulling in, the revenues you're getting. Revenues are finite, so you have to live within the budget that you have, and you just have to understand, you know, talking to the superintendent, his or her staff, and staff and the teachers to kind of figure out, well, where do I allocate? Special needs, that was mentioned, definitely that you need to be able to look at that stuff and say, okay, do we have enough people? I, I think we also have to maybe try to rely more on volunteers, you know? Mr. Staley mentioned that with professionals. Let's try to help the teachers with the money that we do have. And I think using volunteers be the, one of the better ways. And professionals to come in and help the teachers maybe teach certain, certain subjects that they're experts in. So I think there's a lot of ways we can do it, but we have to work within our means.
Mr. Small?
Well, obviously need awareness is very important. It's not just stating that, hey, there is a need, but identifying those needs and coming up with a solution to best deal with those needs. The goal is not to try to make everything equitable down to the penny because certain needs may have priorities and those priorities may require more money, more cost in order to address them. So that in itself is a challenge because again, this school may require more allocation of funds than this school. My goal is not to say, well, I'm not going to give this school because this school is at one penny and I've got to make sure everything reconciles. No. The need awareness determines that and wherever that priority is, that's where the funds go. Because again, the goal is to get the district to be running and, and functioning properly. You cannot do that without understanding the dynamics regarding where funds are going and what the need awareness is regarding where those funds are going. So that's very important to me.
Thank you all so much for participating in those questions and answering them and adhering to the ground rules that were established. At this time, we're about to wrap up and so we want each candidate to take a minute to provide your final thoughts on the opportunities to serve on the Richland District Two School Board. Again, you'll have a minute to provide your final thoughts on the opportunity to serve on the Richland District Two School Board. Mr. Trapp?
I, I would like to see a, a school district where every student feels safe and every teacher feels appreciated and every parent feels that they're heard. And also that all of the taxpayers feel that the money is being spent wisely. Now, I realize that the money thing will, will never come to fruition because, I mean, if, if you're married to someone that agrees with every financial decision you make, you, you're married to someone unique, okay? Uh, we, finance is something we'll never all agree on 100%, but the rest of this, there's no reason every student can't feel safe and, and every teacher feel appreciated and our parents feel that they're, they're heard. That's what we need to work toward. I'll be honest, I really feel very optimistic about this election. Uh, I've, I've heard, I'm very impressed by the people I'm sitting with this morning. And I know that whatever happens, we're going to have a much better schools than we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
So I am hoping that we can continue to be, or we can actually start being the voice for all, for the community and that we bring a level of transparency by educating our community and bringing the right stakeholders to the table. Also that we're talking about safety, that we're talking about spending, that we're talking about the various projects that are happening in our school district and that we're having partnership conversations at all levels. It is critical for our board to move forward so that we can restore the trust and hope in our public and in our community. And we do that by making sure that we are listening so that people can share their truths and that we uncover what's actually happening and create opportunities so that we can create growth and success.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Yes, I see us as a board who is constantly pursuing and improving the lot of our students so that they are indeed achieving. I also think it's important for us to provide a safe environment in order for our students to learn, giving them the tools, the most qualified teachers to produce the good instruction that we know it's the life's blood of student achievement. And lastly, but not least, I'd like to see our district be a district where every child receives an equitable and appropriate education. And when you tie all three of those together, you have a winning formula, I believe, so that we can continue to do the things that brought me and my family to Richland two. And that is the opportunity to give my son, who's now serving in the U.S. Army, go Nick, an excellent education. Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
In 2007, I moved to Columbia, moved my family down here. My wife was a teacher. My mother was a teacher. And so when we started moving down here, the first thing my wife looked at was the schools. And before we ever set foot in Columbia, she said, Richland two, that's the district we want our girls educated in. I have four daughters, two who have already come through the system, top to bottom. I have two that are still in it. I have one who's a junior at Blythewood High School. I have one who's an eighth grader at Blythewood Middle School. This is personal for me. I, I have a lot invested in this. Their education, their safety, their wellbeing, that's my primary concern. As their father, that's my role. And so I believe as, as a board member, being able to help affect policy, not only for my children, but for your children and for your students and for your families, I think is, is a responsibility that I don't take for granted and hopefully, hopefully I will get that opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Nash?
Well, I'll say this, I'm a preacher's kid, so one minute is really hard. It's like 30 seconds. So, um, one, I wanted to invite you guys, when I started just thinking about doing this and being an advocate, I have a special needs stepson who went through the district and there were a lot of resources that weren't available for him. I mentor students that are now leaving and going on to college in this district. And, and the parents and the teachers who are my friends, who are struggling to understand what's going on and want more and they, they need our confidence. They want our, they want to have confidence in us. And so I want to invite you guys to something I've been doing now since I believe April is every Wednesday night I have a Facebook fireside and it is from 6:00 to 6:45 and I talk to the community. Because let's just be honest, these seats belong to y'all. They belong to you. And so you have to have input of what you want to see. So join me for those fireside we've had now since March, over 12,000 engagements is where we are currently. So if you want to join in the conversation and talk there, I'd love to see you guys there on Wednesday nights. So that's tomorrow.
Ms. Porter?
Voters, I am Nikki Porter. I am that fourth grade teacher that started in Richland two in 2007. I did not know the information that I know today. As you can see, I have done a lot of research because I care so deeply about our school district as a product of this district. I started in fifth grade at North Springs Elementary School and every single teacher and administrator that has impacted my life has made it so that I can do something different. Also having a military father, I listen to him and I listen to his structure and his organization and what must be done so that we can succeed. I am that only child that follows the rules. I, you can trust me that I'm a lifelong learner, that I will bring innovative ideas and that I will work hard. I will, anything that I don't know, I will ask questions. I appreciate you hearing me today and I hope that I have your support on November 8th. Please join me on Facebook and Porter for R2.
Thank you so much, Ms. Porter. Mr. President?
It has been a pleasure to address you all this morning. It was early, I only had one cup of coffee, but everything was good. I'm looking forward to engaging this process with you all in this next election. I'm looking forward to your vote. I want to earn it. I don't want to just have it. Please visit my website, it's presidentforrichland2, to read the platform, get all that information. But I've been a uniter in this community for over 30 years. I've been a local pastor for 21 of those years. I have been a small business owner for 13 of those years. And I've been a parent of two lovely kids who are got, who have got a great education out of Richland two. And they have graduated from, from Blythewood High School. And so I, I don't have any horror stories outside of, of Richland two. I just want it to achieve. I believe that I can help it, it to get to the level that needs to get to so we can have some civility, we can operate as some.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rovelli?
Yes. First, I want to thank the sponsors for letting, letting all of us and me coming here and, and, and speaking in front of you. So, you know, it's hard in this kind of environment to really get out a lot of, of, of who we are and kind of our priorities in any detail. So, you know, for me, I, I set up a website, ericrevelli.com. I've done, you know, five videos. They're pretty, about 10 minutes each, so you're going to get a pretty good dosage of what, of what I want to do there. So I, I urge you to please visit there. Basically, I want to bring my experience, you know, I have a good, a good business background. I, I consider myself a very common sense type person. I want to bring that to the board. I want to see, you know, in 10 years, five, 10 years down the road, graduating students that we truly, truly know that they have character, that they understand, you know, the education system and they understand what they're learning. That's, that's, that's how we'll be able to test if we were successful or not, is the kind of students that we graduate and.
Thank you so much. Mr. Small?
As a parent, one of the things I wanted to establish in District Two is trust. The basis of all relationships begins with that. If we can't establish trust between one another, there will never be collaboration, there will never be communication, nothing will get done. It doesn't matter what type of ideas we have, the resources we have. It starts with the interaction between two individuals or a group in order to accomplish a goal. And that's one of the things I want to see as a parent because I have two kids in District Two. I have everything invested in this district. And trust is very important to me because that's going to determine how people respond to you. We've got to be able to identify the needs we have in a district and you can't do that unless I become vulnerable and listen to what you have to say. And that's one of the things I want to establish in District Two as a board member. Establish trust because when you have trust, you can have relationship and when you have relationship, we can accomplish goals. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Staley?
I'm going to share a story with you. There was a fifth grade student, this kid was very shy. This kid didn't really want to do a whole lot. Matter of fact, didn't want to do anything. He hung back in class. He didn't have that great, that good of grades. And a teacher pulled him aside and sat with him for about an hour after class, looked him in the eyes and said, you're going to do something with your life?
Thank you so much, Mr. Staley. That concludes our forum. We would like to extend thanks to the Columbia Chamber for organizing this event, the South Carolina Department of Archives and History for hosting us in this facility, the candidates for attending, and most of all, each and every one of you that are part of this audience for listening and becoming more informed voters for the November 8th election. Please help me in celebrating these wonderful people who are surrendering themselves to public service. Please don't forget to vote.